I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October 26, 2015, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, in your table file tonight you're going to find PowerPoint presentations for the area learning center and for community services. You're also going to find some additional recommendations for appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignments, and also a copy of a PowerPoint and a brief narrative in terms of the update on our district master facilities plan for your review.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, we now have an opportunity for public comments. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on then to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes for the regular school board meeting held on October 12th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Subscribed.
Moved by Ellen, second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, October 12th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognition.
And this evening, I have none, but you do.
Okay, I do have one. Last week, on Thursday evening, the Northfield community participated in the Lights On After School, which is a national event, and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to showcase our after-school programming for the community. And the programs involved were Kid Ventures, the Middle School Youth Center, the Greenville Park Community School, and the Key. And I was able to get to Greenville Park Community School, and it was really, really fun. It's always like that, but it was just a really good reason to bring community people in, but it was just alive with so many different activities and so many people. And what struck me the most, I guess, was how many middle school and high school kids choose to come back and hang out there. So it was really fun, and we'll thank Northfield News. Brittany, you did an excellent job reporting the events. We appreciate that as well. So if there's anything anyone else wishes to add?
No. On Friday night, there was an excellent string choral concert at the high school. It was superb, outstanding music, outstanding presentation.
Wonderful. Okay, anyone else? All right. We will move on then to items for discussion and report. This evening, we have two improvement plan presentations. And just reminders, there's copies of the PowerPoint in the table file. We'll begin first with the area learning center, and we welcome Darrell.
Hello. My name is Darrell Keller. I'm the ALC director for Northfield here, and I also deal with the targeted services after-school program as well. So, we'll jump right into it. I like to keep the first couple slides in here every year, just in case, just a refresher or in case you're not familiar with ALC. The ALC criteria, in order to get into an ALC, you have to meet at least one of these criteria. This is a statute from the state. And so you have to have at least one of these things. You can have more, but you need to have one to get into and qualify for attending an ALC. So this is a little bit less legal terms. The second slide here is, what are ALCs? So some of the differences, the main differences of an ALC when you go to an ALC versus a traditional high school setting, the class sizes tend to be much smaller. So we have five to 15 in a class size. It's pretty typical. We also have year-round programming. So we have credit recovery programs, which are evening and summer school programs that we offer. So if you're behind in one too many classes, you can take advantage of those. Those, just as a side note, you have to be behind in credits to take those. You can't work ahead with the evening or summer classes. So credit recovery programs. We also have, because there's an ALC in the district, we can run targeted services programming, and that's the after-school programming, like the events you were just talking about on Thursday. So we have Greenville Park after-school up and running and the middle school up and running. Bridgewater and Sibley are soon to start. They start in early November, so they're right around the corner. But all that is targeted services programming due to an ALC in the district. Another thing is differentiated instruction. So because our class sizes are pretty small, we have the advantage of being able to differentiate a lot easier than larger classes. So we do a really individual approach of where students are, meeting them where they're at. Some other specific resources, these relate to those, some of those criteria that we have put in place at the ALC here. Chemical dependency counselor comes three days a week. A social worker slash mental health therapist comes three days a week, and school psychologist is also available. So those help with some of the issues that may arise, having those resources available. And then, one of the bigger ones is the next bullet there, is the relationship building. So at the ALC, what our main goal is to make it a respectful, welcoming, safe environment. So students that may be disengaged or may be truant, dropped out of school, said, "It's not for me," we try and make that a welcoming, safe environment so they want to come to school and be there. So that's one of our main goals. And just as a side note, just to let you know how that's going for us, we're pretty happy, pretty pleased. We have, we've had, you know, for quite a while incentive, so if they're there for so many days and have certain grades, then they can have a free day off of school. We've actually had three students, three students that have made it so far this year have chosen not to take the free day off. They'd rather stay, and so we've ordered them a pizza. So they have decided that they don't want to take the day off, they want to stay in school. So fantastic sign.
Oh, good.
Things are in the right direction. And then we also have, ALCs have independent study option, which is kind of going back up to that individual approach, so students can do things individually based through that independent study. Any questions with any of that stuff? All right. So some of the programming that we have at the ALC, there's quite a bit going on there. We have the traditional core classes, social studies, English, math, science, physical education, art, and we have indirect special education services offered as well. Then we have the work seminar and experience program. Small business is through that work seminar program where the students have the business of selling candles. Many of you may have bought some of those wonderful candles. So we have that going through the ALC. We also have a lot of service learning opportunities through the ALC. The backpack program was started through the ALC and has expanded. The care cards, that's where the students make cards and then deliver them to Three Links, some nursing homes, things like that. Sharing in Caring Hands, donations to charities. The Sandwich Guy is one that we just did. We have cookies that we make every Wednesday, and the proceeds for that, we donated to a program called The Sandwich Guy up in the cities. And what he does is he makes sandwiches and then delivers them to the homeless. And we raised enough to make 384 sandwiches. So the students made 384 sandwiches and then brought them up last week, and then they have a whole network and system where they deliver the sandwiches. So that was pretty cool. Bagel deliveries, food recovery programs from St. Olaf in Carlton also are going through the ALC. So there's a lot going on service learning-wise. And then we do have independent study program during the day and also in the evening. The evening starts in December. That's that credit recovery I spoke of earlier. So that's coming up here in December. But we also have independent study things during the day. And then collaboration opportunities as well. So we have partnership, our Promise Fellow is working a lot with the high school Torch Office here. So we have students that are, we have three students doing PSEO currently, and so we have a tutor from Carlton coming over to help them out. We also have some of the Torch people coming to help out the ALC students with PSEO. We do college visits as well. We have speakers. We just had a speaker of a locally-owned business today talk to the small business class, and they were very interested in that. Boundary Waters trip every summer and volunteering with preschools. We're pretty convenient, that long fellow there, where we have the preschoolers downstairs, and there's some students that are very interested in early education, and so they have the opportunity to go down and help out with the preschool program. So here's a little bit more of the statistics. If you're into the numbers. So our current enrollment, we have 51 students presently. Forty-three are what we call seat-based, or that traditional, when you think of, you have a schedule, you go from class to class. That's 43. And then we have eight full-time independent study students. And some of those seat-based students are also doing like maybe one class independent study here and there, just to note that. For independent study here, I have the last three years now, just so you can give an idea of what that, what that is numbers-wise. So in 1314, we had 102 students. And the reason that's in quotes is because there's 42 actual students, but we counted 102 because some of them did more than one class. And so that 102 students is duplicated, 42 is not. And they earned 43 credits. In 1415, 173 students, 57 actual, that earned 55.5, so it went up quite a bit. And then this year so far, we have 14 students, 13 actual, earned about a little over six credits so far. So doing the math, little projections, we're going to be probably right around in the 48 to 50 credits. So we'll be up in that high end again this year if we continue with the trend that we're going. So, any questions with the statistics? Moving right along here, we're flying through.
Because you said the independent study really doesn't even crank up until...
Until December.
December. So you have a few students so far, but you really don't have a lot of data yet from 1516.
Right. Yep, so, and it does grow throughout the year. We're pretty early. In past years, when I've presented the school improvement plan, it's always been later in the year. So this one, we're pretty early in the year yet. So this is, even though there's only 14 in last year, there was 173. The bulk of the independent study students are yet to come. So it's not an alarming statistic by any means, it's just really early in the year. So a couple of things, I just put up the independent study night class and also the summer school. Just a few more so you can see the comparisons there. So 44 students in 1314, 15 students in 1415 for the night class. So it dropped quite a bit from 16 credits to 5.3 credits. And I think one of the largest, what I've noticed, I've been in ALCs for a number of years now, and what I've noticed is that there's trends throughout each year. And this last year, it seemed as though there was fewer students that needed that many credits. They weren't as many behind. And those that were behind were able to get those through summer school or another means. So that's why the night school is a little bit different there. Summer school did get larger though. So we had 64 students in 2014, and in the summer of 2015, we had 72 students. So more elected to do the summer rather than the night class option. And a lot has to do with the night class, even though it's called night class, it's really not night. It's 3:30 to 5:30 for two days a week. So it's, you know, later afternoon class. But a lot, a lot of that is more students are working now, and so they don't, they can't make that class, so then they go into the summer. The targeted services programming, couple highlights to mention. So we continued our community collaboration with Carlton. We had this last year, the BLAST program, which is the sixth through eighth grade, at Carlton campus again, and that went fantastic. Kids were really excited. We had a really high retention rate, which is good to see. That's one of our goals that we've had for the past couple of years, and this last summer we saw that creeping up closer and closer to where we're, where we'd like it to be, where students are coming but then staying, they're not dropping out. So that's a good sign. And a lot of that attributes to that Carlton experience, we think, of having them on the campus. And then the Reading Rockets pilot through the Wings Grant was another fantastic opportunity that we had this last summer. And so what that was, is we had, there's a model in Philadelphia that we modeled this after, and we called it the Reading Rocket. And it's a much more intensive approach. And reading is the focus, but we did do math and other things as well. And what they did is they incorporated parents, and so they had home visits that were part of that. And then they also had parent meetings where the parents would come in once a week. And the goal was to get the parents involved with reading. And so the teachers would go to the home, talk with the students and parents, and then when the parents would come in once a week, they'd help them on reading with your kids, how to do it, what books to read and things like that, and strategies to use. And so it was heavily, heavily focused on reading, and we had some great gains, which is still being analyzed right now. But the initial data that came through was fantastic, that there was some good success there with students bumping up their reading levels in a really short amount of time. So that was good. So 2014-15, you can read through the numbers there. And 2015-16, you can see a couple of programs not quite started yet, but Greenville and the middle school are around the same. The middle school also, it's very early. We've only had a couple of weeks of actual program, so that also is going to ramp up here throughout the year. And then the summer program, 2014 had 398, this last summer, 423. So we had a very large. And then at some point, I didn't attach it to this PowerPoint, but at some point, I'd encourage you all to go to the website, that link there that's on there. It's a, Genus Munson, one of the Summer Plus teachers, put together a little video with students that were in the Plus program, and they were saying what Plus means to them. So it's a pretty adorable video. If you get a chance to go check it out, that would be worth your time. Any questions? I'm flying through this, so feel free if you... All right. So that's our updates and general things. Here is the actual site progress report for the ALC for the 1415 school year. So our goal number one is a little, hopefully, this is pretty clear, our goal was a little percentage-y. So the ALC will have 60% of the students achieve 85% or better per grading period for the 2014-15 school year. And so what that means, we have eight grading periods in a year. So we've taken the semesters, broken those into quarters, and then taken the quarters and broken those into grading periods as well. So we have eight throughout the year. There's quite a few reasons for that. One of them is, so as students, we can transition students in really easily that way, because there's always a grading period right around the corner. But what we did is we took our attendance rate and looked at it for each grading period. So what the two percentages mean is, if you have 85% or above, then you're not going to incur any attendance penalties, so you won't lose credit if you're there 85% or above. So we wanted to have 60%, a little bit more than half, be in that range where they're not getting any attendance penalties whatsoever. So some of the things that we did, we researched effective attendance policies, we collected data, we surveyed students to see why they're missing, what are the reasons behind it. Our reality, we ranged from 25 to 67% of students at that 85% or above. So we did meet our goal in a couple grading periods, grading period one and grading period five. And that's our initial findings, what we thought. Grading period one, everyone is very excited, very committed to, "Let's get back to school and get this done." And also right after Christmas break, everyone comes back with that renewed vigor. You got a little break, let's come back. And so we had grading period one and five with good attendance. And here's the continued analysis. So the percent above 85, when you look at 27%, 39%, 25%, 32, you think, "Oh, that's pretty low, that's pretty alarming." However, we continued, we dug a little bit deeper because that's just kind of the surface data. So our overall attendance rates, you can see on the left-hand side there, range from 76 to 86. And for, as far as ALCs go, that is tremendous. That's fantastic overall attendance rate. I have done a little talking with other ALCs, and there's some that are in the 20 to 60% range, 30% range. And so for us to have in the 70s to 80s is fantastic. So what that tells us is that even though there's a small number that are getting to that 85%, overall, there's quite a few people getting there. They're just missing it. They're just outside that 85%. So we just need to nudge them a little bit to get them up to that 85, because overall, our attendance rate is hovering right around the low 80s. So we're just trying to get that, just over that little hill there. So digging a little bit deeper helped us out tremendously to figure out what exactly does this data mean. So that's what we're trying to do with some interventions last year and also this year, is targeting those students that are right really close and just encouraging them to make it to that 85%.
And Darrell, again, the underlying purpose for focusing on attendance is...
So the underlying purpose of this is because we are, number one goal is to get them credits, get them moving towards that graduation. And with attendance, one of our main issues is if they have too many absences, then they lose credit, because we can't give credit if they're never there. And so we try and get them to have that good attendance, so that way, not only can they get credit, but they can also retain that information and move with a nice flow through the school year.
Good. So you did some, I was just reading, you did some surveys amongst students. What did the students report as being some of the challenges they face in attendance?
Yes, so that's a range. It's a difficult range, because some students, it ranged from everything, from students just had difficulty getting up in the morning, and so there was no real reason holding them back. And then in the other end of the spectrum, there were life crisis that was holding them back from getting to school. So we have, we don't have a whole lot of, but parents, we have some students that are parents, and so that's, that's a big hurdle. Transportation's a big hurdle for students having a reliable way to get to school. And then some other things, mental health things come up pretty frequently, and just issues that are, they're dealing with outside of school. We do have a higher and an older population, so quite a few seniors, some, quite a few juniors. And so a lot of them are also working and trying to pay bills that they, that they have, or a couple of them are even living on their own. And so trying to balance that work and school life is another issue that came up with, the struggle to try and, they have to pay the bills, but yet they want to continue that education. So it's quite a range of things. It's hard to target one thing, to say this is going to move the needle the most, because it really was across the board. I think my battery just ran out. So goal number two, of the total credits attempted, there will be a five increase, 5% increase in credits earned per grading period when compared to the same grading period from the previous school year. So a few years ago, we just compared each grading period in the same year, and that isn't really comparing apples to apples, we thought, because of that earlier slide where I said, the first of the year, in the middle of the year, where they have that renewed vigor. And there's always a cycle of springtime, wintertime, when students tend to get more credits and students tend not to get so many credits. And so we decided to compare it to the exact same grading period of the year before. And there's flaws in that too, because students are not the same students and things like that. But we thought we'd give that a, an attempt for our second goal. So again, we researched strategies, trying to see what are some things that we could do to increase that credit completion. We talked a lot, we've, we continue to talk every week in our PLCs about data collection, discussions of how can we move this needle. Staff matched up to students for individual check-ins, and we've had, last year, we had a couple staff members go to the MAP Conference, which is the Minnesota Association of Alternative Programs Conference. And just about all the, the majority of ALCs have a presence at the MAP Conference. It's for MAPs, it's for ALCs, charter schools, and other alternative programs, and it's really well-attended. So it's a, it's a fantastic conference to go and get some ideas there. So we try and make it there, at least a couple people every year. So we went there to try and get some ideas there. So our reality was, we ranged from 58 to 73% of earned credits. We did meet our goal here again in two different grading periods, grading periods three and seven. So it's a little bit different than one and five, which is interesting. If you can flip to the next one there. On the left-hand side, you'll see our percentage of credits earned, and then for the 1314 school year, and then the 1415 is on the right hand. So the ones that are underlined, you'll see are the ones that we met, the goal, the grading periods that we met. We went up in the third grading period there by 9%, and we went up in the seventh by 23%. A huge increase there in that springtime. And then if you just scan through those on the right-hand side, you'll notice that the majority of them, we went up, so we increased the amount of credit completion, which is a good thing. Few of them, we just missed our 5% increase, so we didn't quite get 5% more than the previous year. But we got 2%, 1%, .6%, 23%. And then the ones that we went down, we did go down 4% in the first one, only 1% in grading period five there, or six, sorry. And then the last grading period, we went down quite a bit. And 1314, we had a tremendous amount of seniors that needed that last push to finish things off. And in 1415, we didn't have that same group, so we didn't have, a lot of the seniors didn't have that push that they needed to get all their credits to finish. So it's a little bit different in 1415. Any questions? Yes?
Ellen, so I was finding it interesting, I was trying to look back and forth between the, the attendance goal and the credit completion goal, and it doesn't exactly, I was thinking that they might parallel each other, and it doesn't seem to be exactly the same.
No.
Because you think they all work together. Did you look at that at all too?
Yes, we did. And I actually added a couple columns in my spreadsheet, because I keep track of all this data in spreadsheets. And so I added a couple, just to track that down a little bit, to see which ones lost credit due to attendance and which ones lost credit due to a failing grade. And I thought it was going to be overwhelming in one or the other, but it wasn't. It was inconclusive. And so that, another added frustration for us to say, "Oh, we can't even target if it's absent-related or, or effort-related." It's really inconclusive. So it was tough for both years to really pinpoint what the cause of that was, but they didn't match up like you'd think they would. So goal number three, this one, we just added, the last two, the attendance and the credit recovery, we've had those for a number of years, or not those exact goals, but something related to those two. Goal number three, we came up as talking through our PLCs, that all graduating seniors will have a post-secondary life plan, including being employed currently, enrolled or in the process of being enrolled in college, or enlisted in the military. So to have one of those plans of what they're going to do after they graduate. This came about because we had quite a few discussions in our PLCs of students that were saying, "I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do when I'm going to finish. I have no idea." And so we decided, what a fantastic opportunity to take that transition and say, "Let's help you mold what your next step is going to be." So we put that into our goal number three for the 1415 school year. So some of the things that we did, the Promise Fellow conducted exit interviews with all the graduating seniors, and so we had an exit interview so we could gather some data of what their life plan was going to be and how they were going to achieve that. We had recruiters visited, some were guest speakers. We had workforce presence, weekly visits. We had college visits to McNally, South Central Riverland, MSU, and other colleges through Torch, and so we ramped up our college visits as well. We met our goal to identify and assist graduating seniors with the development of life plan. So all seniors, when they graduated, had one of the things in place. And I put an asterisk in there, because one senior, when they were just about to finish, had a couple interviews that they were going through, and so they weren't officially, they weren't currently employed when they finished, but soon after they were employed, because they had the interviews, they just weren't officially hired until right after they finished. So we counted that as good. Any questions with that? Yes?
At what point during their time at the ALC do they start developing their life plan?
So we want to, for sure, by the time they're a senior, have that sound plan.
Okay.
11th graders normally start to think about that. 10th graders, it's not even on their radar. 11th graders, a large majority of them, it's not really on their radar either. We really have to push this, because a lot of the students that we have in the ALC are moment-to-moment, and so they're not thinking of next year, next month, they're just thinking of, "What am I doing right now?" So we're working with that to try and... So, we're working with that to try and get that goal-setting tool into that frame of thinking of, okay, what is your steps? What are your goals for where you want to go?
Okay, excellent, thank you.
That's partly why we incorporated this, is to get more of that long-term goal-setting and planning. So, here is the continuous improvement plan. And hopefully, you're all right with our strategy because the three goals that I just went through are all multi-year goals. And so, we're on year two of all three of those. And so, we're going with the three-year plan for all three of those. We're now in year two. And some of the, I'll just go through some of the changes of what we're doing to address those. And the main reason that we chose the three same goals is that, for us, we think those are the three main core essence of the ALC. If we can get that attendance reined in, if we can get the credit completion and get that life plan, that's a good base to start with. So, that's why we decided to keep the three same goals. So, for the attendance part, same goal, sixty percent, wanting eighty-five percent or better so they don't incur any attendance policy penalties. We altered our attendance policy from a sliding scale to four or more absences is a loss of credit per grading period. So, before, we had a sliding scale where if you had three absences, you'd lose some credit in the class. Four, you'd lose all the credit in the class, or for the assignments that you missed. And then, five, you start losing the credit for the class. Six, you can't get credit for the class at all. So, it was more of a, the first couple affect your grade in the class, the last couple affect your credit for the class. We went away with that and, due to our research, due to talking to some ALC programs, due to talking with the students, we decided to go with the, be a little bit more black-and-white policy of, if you have four or more, you lose credit for the class. So, it's not the sliding scale anymore, it's a little bit more concrete. We also, we're planning on collecting and reviewing the attendance data, weekly discussions, and staff meetings to analyze as well. So, right now, a little update, so percent of students at eighty-five percent for grading period one is seventy-one point four-three. So, we met our goal the first grading period. We had good attendance, where a lot of students came back. One of the, another side note, a little anecdote, is that we had, we always have our registration open house in August for students to come and register. And we had that this August again. And we did not have a single student that came through that was discouraged or not looking forward to school. Every single one that came through was like, we asked, you ready for school? Yeah, I'm ready to go, this is, I'm excited, it's going to be a good year. So, we had every student that came through excited to get going and excited to get back to it. So, I think that was, this meeting our goal wasn't too much of a surprise because a lot of students came in with a really positive attitude of, they wanted to crank through some stuff. Our overall attendance, so the eighty-five percent was at seventy-one. Our overall attendance rate was eighty-eight point one. So, again, really, really strong, close to ninety percent. Our goal number two, again, was that five percent increase from credits earned from the previous school year. And this is a little bit tougher to compare apples to apples because we switched the attendance policy, which switches the ones that you lose because of credits. It's a little bit tougher to compare, but we are comparing it still. So, if you go down to the bottom there, credits earned from the fourteen, fifteen were seventy point one, or seventy point seven. So, this is down six percent, which, we have a stricter attendance policy now. So, with this down six percent, it's still promising because it is a stricter attendance policy. So, some students lost some credit due to attendance, but overall, it was in the ballpark, so we, using the technical term. And goal three, this is, even though we met our goal last year of having all seniors have that life plan, we thought it was way too important to get rid of that goal. So, we're going with the same goal again and keeping that standard very high that we have every single graduating senior have that life plan. So, we have two students who are just about to finish their credits. They have this week and next week and could be done next Friday. And they are both currently employed. One has plans of applying for college and being assisted in doing so. So, they're going through the college application process right now with help from our Promise Fellow. And so, right now, we're in good shape with the seniors. And these are super seniors, so they would have graduated last year, just missed it by a couple of credits. And so, now, they're going to be done here very soon. So, how are we going to achieve the goals that we've set for this year? PLCs and staff meetings are very huge for us. We're a small group that we meet all together as a PLC, so our ALC is a PLC. And so, we take those Wednesday mornings, advantage of them, and also staff meetings that we have, and go through articles, research things. Right now, we're working on the Twenty-First Century Learning. The communication is the aspect that we're focusing on right now for our PLCs. And so, going through listening skills, oral skills, writing skills, communicating. And then, we're reading those, doing mini lessons about how to improve those things. And so, that's what we're currently doing in our PLC work. And then, staff development, the MAP Conference, again, is coming up this February. And so, we're going to really try and get some staff to get to that again because they always bring back fantastic ideas. And the Promise Fellow is currently doing the exit interviews. We didn't have any PSCO last year, this year, we have three PSCO students. So, that's really ramped up. And so, she's pretty busy helping those PSCO students and also assisting students that are on that verge of finishing with college plans and things like that. So, the ALC happening, this is a pretty busy slide because it is a busy place. A lot of things are happening. So, the first of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the first few things are brand-new. So, we now have a staff or a student advisory team. We have some volunteers that came forward, we have about seven students on that, that are planning everything from field trips to, we're having a Halloween party on next Friday. And they plan the Halloween party of what that's going to consist of. So, they're pretty involved in planning things at the ALC, which is fantastic to get them involved with that. Posting the year highlights, if you go to the ALC hallway, you'll see in one part, from September all the way through June, we're putting up what's happened or what's happening in the ALC so you can see the highlights of the year. We also just started, or we brought back the A and B honor rolls for the ALC. So, we had a lot of students that I gave the honor roll certificates for. We had seventeen, actually. There was five on the A honor roll and twelve on the B honor roll that we gave our certificates for, for grading period one, that were very happy. Had a lot of comments that they're going to frame them, so that's fantastic. We did do a field trip already this year to the Minnesota Zoo, that's the picture there. We went to the zoo and the students had a fantastic time. It was very enjoyable for staff and students. It was a beautiful day, one of those beautiful days that we had a couple of weeks ago. We went to the IMAX and saw the South Pacific video and went to the zoo for the day, which is fantastic. And then, some of the things that continued, that we've continued now for a couple of years are golden tickets. We have a weekly drawing for golden tickets. So, what that is, is in the lower right corner here is our PBIS chart of expectations. It's a little hard to read on here, but I can get you a copy if you'd like. And what our main theme is, is R3. So, it's respect times, or to the third power. So, respect yourself, respect others, and respect learning, it's our main theme, just keeping a respectful environment. And so, the students came up with this grid two years ago. They refined it last year, and now, we have that in place this year. And so, if they're doing things that are on that chart that are respectful, they can get a golden ticket from staff members. And then, every Friday, we have a drawing from all those people that are in there. And our goal is to have a thousand golden tickets at the end of the year for a grandiose pizza party. And so, right now, we have had quite a few golden tickets already, a lot of students are doing fantastic things. We also borrowed the idea from the middle school for subs for subs. So, doing that program as well. If a sub puts their name in that they were extremely helpful or something like that, they can get their name into a drawing to get a six-inch sub from Subway. The posted expectation chart, we're pretty proud that we're doing really well with our PBIS initiative. So, we have a lot of the steps underway. And so, we have that posted everywhere in the, in the building. And we do have PBIS lessons, mini lessons. Some of them, we came up with at the beginning of the year, and some of them, as issues arise, we say, oh, let's do a refresher lesson on this issue, whatever that may be. So, we have those going out throughout the year. Door decorating is always a favorite event, so that's coming up in the holiday season. And then, we have student talks where we've paired up students with advisors. And then, they just talk about attendance and credits and act as cheerleaders just to help students get through those things if they need a little, little extra incentive for attendance or credits. And then, as I said, a lot of service projects currently going on. On Thursday, we're actually going up for sharing and carrying hands up in the cities. And so, we're bringing a group up there for some volunteer work. Any questions?
Group members' questions. Rob?
I'm curious, you have three goals that you did last year and you're doing this year. One of them, you kind of met, the third one. I'm just wondering, what, I mean, these all seem like good goals that would be good goals forever. What happens to them once they're met? Do they just get filed away? Or do you, I mean, do you have plans to keep monitoring them even after three years is up?
Yep, my guess is, because I went through the past goals of the ALC, and they've had these, the first two, the attendance and the credit completion, have been some form or another. Ours just happened to be the way we're measuring them this year, last year, and this year. My guess is those are the two main themes that we come in contact with on a daily basis. And so, they will definitely be maybe reincarnated in a slightly different form. But that theme is going to definitely be there because those are our main issues, is attendance and credit completion. And so, they'll probably be there for this year and next year because we have, they're on a three-year cycle. So, they'll be the same next year as well. And then, after that, we'll revisit and see, how are we going to tackle this program or this goal from maybe a different angle? If we need to tweak it a little bit, how are we going to improve the goal? Or change instructions so that way, we don't get into a rut or anything like that.
Questions, Ellen?
So, Darryl, I don't want to put you in the spotlight, but you had, at the DPAC meeting, given us this great description of how your team builds your site improvement plan. And at DPAC, we were curious as to how these, how DPAC goals end up influencing it. And I thought it might be really useful for the board if you just gave us the elevator talk of that.
Yes, and so, because I have the advantage of being on the DPAC team, I have what's talked about at DPAC in my mind when going into staff meetings, PLCs, things like that. And so, I can bring that, that perspective into our discussion as we're talking about it. So, for us, the student services of the DPAC always rings really loudly with our group of connectedness, engagement, things like that. And so, it's not a huge stretch. Our conversations always revolve around that when we start talking about what are our building goals going to be. It is connectedness, it is that relationship-building component. And so, I try to bring in that, the DPAC conversations that we've had or presentations that we have at DPAC into that conversation. And then, normally, what we do is we backwards map our goals. And so, we say, what are the issues that we're facing? We determine what those things are. We then backwards map or look to the DPAC goals, to the larger picture of what goals do the district think are worthwhile, worth investigating? And so, then, we combine the two into going forward with, okay, here's the issues that we're having. What are the district goals, or what direction does the district want us to head? And then, how do those relate to each other? And so, then, that spurs our conversation into specifically, how are we going to funnel this into a SMART goal? If that makes, hopefully, that's. So, it's kind of a backward, back-and-forth, backwards map. We zoom in, but then zoom out to the DPAC and then zoom back into our specific SMART goals.
Other questions? No?
Excellent report. And I commend you and your teachers for excellent program, which seems to be reflected in just about any measurement you've got there. Academics, or interest, or attendance, or whatever, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions? I had two, two quick questions. I wanted to go back to the Summer Plus and just ask a question, which I should have done then, so I apologize. The Reading Rockets pilot, was the pilot intended to determine its success for summer-type programming or potentially a classroom-type setting?
So, for now, it's summer programming. So, our goal right now is, we did the pilot as a pilot just to see how this would work with two classrooms. We had seventeen classrooms this last year, so it was really large. And so, we had two of those were Reading Rockets-specific. And we just wanted to see how this model would work. Is it feasible, is it, you know, could we get the engagement? And we came to find out that it was definitely feasible and there was a lot of engagement and excitement about the program. And so, our goal now is we're going to take that, and we have an elementary targeted services planning committee. And so, what we do is we meet on roughly a monthly basis, month-and-a-half basis. And we evaluate the previous program, summer or school year, and then, what we're going to do to move forward with either the school year or the summer. And so, so far, the, although it's in its infancy, a lot of excitement or a lot of talk has been taking the Reading Rockets and ramping it up for next summer. Because the school year is, it's a pretty intensive program. And to get it going for the school year would be very ambitious. And so, we want to take our time with it and nurture it so that way, we can put in a program that is sound and has good quality to it. And so, right now, the thought is that we're going to ramp that up for the next summer because it was successful in, in our mind of doing the goals that we wanted to achieve.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question, within the life plan strategy that you have, and I know it's still in its infancy and you see it continuing to grow, will there be potential opportunity for exposure to the technical and trade-type skill opportunities out there?
Yeah, definitely. I have talked with Marnie Thompson at the high school of partnering up with the industrial tech department here and moving forward with that. And so, there is definite possibility, like, we, there are students that are very interested. We have a couple right now that are very interested in automotive and small engines and things like that. So, to get those opportunities for them would be fantastic to move forward with, collaborating and partnering up with other, other resources.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, this is always a great report. And I think, I think it was great that Margaret was able to point to the attendance piece because it sort of, it really highlighted your reality and the students' reality and the number of obstacles there are. And I think one reason you are so successful, particularly the numbers that you're showing so early on, is just that you have that sense of what that reality is and how you can make every student successful. And I don't think there's another more passionate group of teachers than the staff at the ALC, they're amazing. So, it didn't surprise any of us that they were all excited to come back to school because it's just an amazing staff and you guys just do an incredibly, incredibly great job for the students. So, thank you very much.
I would echo that, the staff is fantastic.
The best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we will move on. Erin Bailey will present community services. Again, PowerPoint presentation in your packet.
It's already set for Breezy, so.
Thank you for having us here tonight. As Julie mentioned, I'm Erin Bailey on the Drift Community Services. And I'm happy to have Breezy Barrett, our Ventures Coordinator, join us here this evening as we present our progress on our site improvement plan from two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and then, share our goals and objectives for this upcoming year. So, I just want to start with a reminder of what the mission of the Community Services Division is. And that is to support the learning and participation of adults and children in our community through citizen involvement, access to school and community resources, and promotion and collaboration and partnerships. and promotion and collaboration and partnerships. Madam, I might have put the wrong part in. So if you remember from last year, we had three objectives. They were around collective impact, security, and continuous improvement. So before reviewing the goals and objectives we have this year, we'll reflect on the progress we had from last year. Our objective one last year was to support the Northfield Promise Initiative in the community that will focus on supporting all of Northfield youth from cradle to career. Many of you have probably seen this graph. If you, everyone in the school district received the Northfield Promise Annual Report last year and this was the inside of the report. So if you can remember back to last spring, this was sent to all households. Again, the Northfield Promise has benchmarks that are both academic and non-academic. So you can see the top part of this graph is the academic. The lower part would be the non-academic. This is, has been kind of the uniqueness of the Northfield Promise to have both academic and non-academic, although I will say that is something that more communities are taking a look at, where other communities start out very, very heavily on their academic are now kind of stepping back and taking a broader picture to include the non-academic. So Generation Next, which is in the Twin Cities, has now, in addition to their five benchmarks that have supported academic, are now for the first time looking at adding a non-academic benchmark. So I think it's, it's safe to say that Northfield was on the front end of looking at both academic and non-academic. So last year, the work that the Community Services Division did centered primarily around being ready for kindergarten. So the first benchmark on the academic side. What you'll see throughout this report tonight and highlighted especially in our goals for next year is the expanded work Community Services doing continually still in the being ready for kindergarten, but also expanding into the being ready for grade level reading by third and sixth grade. And then also in the non-academic, looking at those connections in the community for early childhood. So as, as we go forward, just to reflect on this graph of where we are at. One of the highlights for Northfield Promise was a visit from Representative Paul Seeson, who I know some of you were involved with. He visited Northfield on September 28th to learn more about the work of Northfield Promise, but especially in light of the state investment in collective impact work and so really wanting to take a look at what was going on in Northfield, especially what was going very well in Northfield. So to give you a couple of highlights from last year around our work in collective impact, the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team developed a roadmap, roadmap, which was approved by the Council of Champions. This roadmap was kind of the culmination of 14 months of work by the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team. There was 30 community members, staff members of the Northfield School District, other early childhood professionals, kindergarten teachers that made up that Ready for Kindergarten Action Team. So they spent a significant amount of time putting together this roadmap that, that will help guide the work for the future of what we're, what will happen as we prepare children for kindergarten. And so this roadmap will guide what we do in the work in the next year. And we've also rolled that Ready for Kindergarten Action Team is now part of our Early Childhood Initiative Coalition. So this has been an ongoing group that met prior to collective impact and still meets, but it allows those that want to still be involved to continue to be involved and meet on a monthly basis for updates. There are still subcommittees that are working, but for those members who were really looking for the commitment to develop the roadmap, it gave them the opportunity to do that and move on to other projects. So that will help guide our work. And then I was also fortunate enough to attend the STRIVE National Conference last October, which was very exciting and certainly a great place to connect with many other communities who are part of the STRIVE network. Other highlights for, that are from the last year were around expanding our early learning scholarships for our most at-risk children. So last fall, we hosted a lunch for community organizations to inform them about our early learning scholarships that are available in the, in the Northfield community and then also to provide them with information. So those that attended this were organizations like the hospital, public health, Growing Up Healthy, those who have connections and interactions with families in our Northfield community. So we not only shared with them what it means to have and access an early learning scholarship, but actually gave them the application forms so they could directly hand them out to families that they see to, they can still send them our way and give them our contact information, but to make it as simple as possible, we did give them the applications in English and Spanish and kind of helped explain what this means and how to get, get them to the next step of actually accessing scholarships. So through that, we did add 32 additional children to Hand in Hand Preschool, that those children were all through scholarships. Eighteen of those children accessed a Pathway Two Scholarship and 14 of those children accessed, excuse me, 18 to access Pathway One Scholarship, 14 accessed a Pathway Two Scholarship. And just as a reminder, the Pathway One Scholarships are awarded to the family. And so they, the family is awarded the scholarship and then they choose a four-star parent aware rated location to use those dollars. Pathway Two Scholarship dollars are awarded to the organization. So Northfield Public Schools had last year $35,000 of Pathway Two Scholarships and then we, then dollars are awarded from the Minnesota Department of Education to the school district, then we award those scholarships to the students. In addition, with some of our Pathway Dollars last year, we held monthly early childhood events, both for children and families, and we had 862 children and families attend those events over the last year, which was really exciting to see. These were typical, they were free events. They were held at various locations between Longfellow and then our Community Resource Center. We partnered with many agencies such as Head Start, other preschools to really make these events open to any family with children in their early childhood ages. Just a couple of other things that we did also do in expanding the early learning scholarships and access last year. We also purchased Mother Goose Curriculum for Early Ventures, which is our wraparound childcare program for the preschool rooms. This is again to just help, again, provide some curriculum for those students that either are or are not attending hand in hand. Early Ventures is also four-star parent aware rated. And then we did host two meetings among early childhood staff and kindergarten staff. And we've found these very beneficial as these are two groups that are not really in any of the same buildings. And so don't have the opportunity that you might have when you're moving from first or second grade to kind of talk about what needs are present in a grade. And so we had held these two and the first meeting was held in the fall and really reflected on the data we got back from Ready, Set, Go Day surveys about experiences children had had before they entered kindergarten, who was ready for kindergarten, how do we better prepare that, those students to be ready for kindergarten? And then we held another one in the spring to talk about how can we continue to make, help with students and what do they need to help access and know where services are in the Northfield community to help them better be prepared for kindergarten upon entrance? And I will let Breezy recap our next two goals from last year.
All right. So our, our objective two from last year was to successfully implement security enhancements at the Northfield Community Resource Center and within community service programs. So if you remember last year, we stood here and said that this goal presented a few unique challenges as the NCRSC was in the process of moving building management to the building partners. This did take place last May, which then enabled us to move forward with the majority of our goals. So some of the highlights of what we were able to accomplish included the purchase of handheld two-way radios for the middle school youth center, fire tornado and lockdown drills practiced at all KidVentures locations, as well as the middle school youth center. All NCRSC exterior doors were numbered on both the inside and outside, and then this information was then shared with emergency personnel. Three NCRSC building-wide worksite wellness events were held to increase building awareness so all people can recognize each other within the building and know who the different building partners are. The most effective and efficient way of securing the youth wing during programming hours was determined. And then coordinators also developed a security plan for community services programs. And this plan was included in your board packet last year and necessary adjustments have been made throughout the course of this last school year. So just as a refresher, this is what the first page of the emergency document was that coordinators created, and it has been proven to be extremely helpful in making staff more aware and more comfortable should a crisis situation arise. Just within community services, we have a number of staff that are not necessarily district employees or who only work on occasion. So this document has definitely served as a nice reference for them in helping make sure that they and everyone in their program can be as possibly prepared as they can be should some sort of emergency arise. And then objective three was to engage KidVentures in a continuous improvement model. So last fall, both myself and the Youth Development Coordinator attended a youth program quality assessment training to help guide us in formulating a plan for the self-study process at both KidVentures and the Middle School Youth Center. So the youth program quality assessment is also known as the YPQA. And it was developed by the Center for Youth Program Quality and it's a validated instrument that is used heavily across the state to determine quality in out-of-school time programs. While the YPQA looks at many components of the whole overall program, it specifically concentrates on safety, youth engagement, and youth voice, or youth basically having a say in the daily operations of the program. So last fall, YPQA assessments were done at all three KidVenture locations as well as the Middle School Youth Center. After these initial assessments, staff teams met to discuss the findings and then formulate an action plan for implementing improvements. One quality improvement that was made at KidVentures was the implementation of daily structured activities that revolve around Minnesota's school age indicators of progress. So while KidVentures is not academically focused, activities are now implemented with purpose and intent. So kids are engaged in STEM, language and literacy, the arts and social and emotional development during out-of-school time as well as during the school day. One of the other major implements that was created from the YPQA assessment was the implementation of a tracking system at all three KidVentures locations. So tracking systems are used by the majority of school age care programs as a safety measure and they do basically just what their name implies in that they track the location of children during program hours. So a wide variety of tracking systems exist from moving popsicle sticks to flow charts to magnet boards. And so the KidVentures site leaders visited other school age care sites, exploring the concept of tracking systems and just investigating the various methods used especially by those programs that operate out of portable space like lunchrooms. So together, we formulated a plan of what was the most feasible solution for KidVentures. And so right now, all KidVentures sites use a magnet board where kids' names are written down the left-hand side and then locations are written across the top. And so the locations include like the gym, the media center, art room outside, things where they visit daily. So anytime that they go somewhere during program hours, they need to come move their magnet to indicate what location they are going to. So not only does this help parents when they come to pick up their child as they know the location of their kid, but also just serves as another safety layer in helping staff know the location of each student in the program at any given time.
In case you didn't catch it, this last picture did show, is an example.
Kids.
So this year, we have added two new objectives and we're in the final year of our third objective. The first objective is around Northfield Promise and it actually is a new objective. We did finish our first three years of the last objective, but really felt the work is not done there and we really want to continue to expand and enhance what we have previously been working on as a division. The second objective is the same objective around security. This is the third year of, for this objective for us. And then our last objective is around space and programming needs for the Community Services Division, and this is a new objective for this year. So just to give you a little bit of background on kind of the work, what will guide our work this year and the goals that you see in our site improvement plan around our first objective, which is the Northfield Promise, is I want to give you a little background about what was done similarly to last year at Ready, Set, Go Day this year. Again, much of our work this year in, in the Northfield Promise area will focus on the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team, the read-by-grade levels at third and sixth grade, and then also around those connections to the community for early childhood ages. So like I mentioned, again, like last year, we did implement a survey to incoming kindergarten families at Ready, Set, Go Day to gain knowledge about their experience, their child's experiences prior to entering kindergarten. I should say there is many thanks to Hope Langston who, for her work in compiling the surveys and assessing the data. So once they were administered, Hope has spent a lot of time putting the next two graphs that you're going to see together. So at Ready, Set, Go Days at all three elementary schools, we did have responses from 221 families, which was a response rate of 81.9%. The total kindergarten enrollment as of roughly the end of September was 270 students. We did ask some other questions other than the ones I'm going to show you, but this felt like what would be important for you to see what's going to guide our work. So our first question was around prior to kindergarten, did your child spend any time being cared for for outside of your home? And you can certainly see that there, the majority who participated in this survey were a yes. I will say what we have found at least to some degree in the last two years in doing this survey is those who we don't get any response for tend to have less, are less likely to have some connections in the community as well. That doesn't mean that they maybe haven't been cared for outside of the home, but tend to have a little less knowledge of what services are available in the community and are a little less likely to be accessing preschool. They might be accessing a daycare or some sort of... So this then was the hours spent in preschool or daycare per week, again, from those who are participating in some sort of outside of their home experiences, just gives you a rough idea of how much time is being spent there. And then this information gives you the breakdown of where children are located, whether in preschools or childcare facilities. And again, just to note on this is that this graph shows if there were multiple responses, this is reflecting the, the first place on the, on their list. So if they said, for example, which many do, I attend hand-in-hand preschool and early ventures, they for this purpose got quoted in hand-in-hand preschool, but didn't, we just counted the first place that was listed by families. So there are the opportunity that some of these can be duplicated. And again, what we're looking through for in this is where are these experiences happening? Where are families being connected in the community to early childhood experiences? We also then, what we have asked in this survey was questions about if they have a medical home, do they have a connection to a medical provider? Again, wanting to really get, start to take a look at those connections that families have in the early childhood years that may not be directly related to preschools or childcare centers, but that are related to community services. So that work, again, this will start to guide again how we are going to access, provide more services to children, have more children accessing scholarships, and again, trying to make those connections in the community. And then as I mentioned, the other work that we, the new benchmark that we continue to work around is what we more loosely call the reading team, but that is the reading by grade level in third and sixth grade. One thing that has been happening in the Northfield community that really has been happening out of the Early Childhood Initiative Coalition for a number of years is, and with a partnership in Rotary, is that we have these free bookshelves around the community. You have likely seen them if you've been in the NCRSC, it's in the Link area down from the Community Services Office. There's a few in a couple of different elementary buildings, Laundromats, Car Time has one, Alina has one. And then there's these beautiful boxes that Rotary has made there people can donate books throughout the community. And so we've been doing that for a number of years. We've had great volunteers that have helped us. We just haven't had a great tracking system and are, are now more interested in kind of knowing, how many books are we donating on an annual basis? Where are we donating these through? And so developing, one of our goals for this year is to develop a better tracking system. We have lots of books coming in and lots of books going out, and so how can we better track where that is all happening? In addition, this is actually, what you're seeing on the right is actually a sticker and it's the one, two, three, Read With Me sticker will also be added to these books that are distributed. This sticker is, is in both English and Spanish and really helps a parent or a family member and oldest sibling, helps guide them in how to relearn and understand books with their children. And so this has really been, the initial work and pilot has been happening out of the Northfield Hospital. And so when you come for a well-child visit, you will now receive a book and your pediatrician will, the child will get to pick out a book. The pediatrician will then show this and coach families in where this is at in the book and how they can read with their child and help their child better understand and learn from what they're reading. And so that is in the process of rolling out. And really what we're looking at is having trusted professionals in the community also becoming literal, default literacy coaches and in helping to really help be able to explain and encourage literacy and reading, especially at those young years. So as this is rolling out in the hospital now, this will also then roll out in all those free bookshelves. So as we continue now to receive books, those will also, those stickers will go in the books that we are putting out on the bookshelf. And I should say, we don't... And I should say, we don't receive a lot of donated books in Spanish, but we do make the purchase of books in Spanish, so we have, I should just, to be clear, we have equal amounts of books in English and Spanish that are available on those bookshelves. And then finally, we'll create and distribute four free libraries through the Teen Outreach Program, which is a program at the Middle School Youth Center. And these, if you think of St. Olaf Avenue, and the little libraries that you see on some of the neighborhood corners there, really looking at having some libraries like those in areas of town where you don't typically see them, or don't see them at the current moment. And so looking, and those again would be libraries that we will then take care of stocking with the books that we receive through donations.
All right. So as Erin mentioned, we are in our final year of Objective 2 Security Enhancements at the NCRC. So through last year's facility meetings, we were able to gather important feedback from both families and staff, and then use this in guiding our course of action with this year's security enhancements. So some of the key ideas that were generated and will be implemented this year include the striping of the NCIR parking lot, which will then incorporate a large crosswalk leading to the NCRC, as well as adding six designated parking spots for families either with small children, or parking spots designated just for 15-minute parking. So we heard a lot of feedback from families, especially with those with little kids, that they were walking all the way across the parking lot, they couldn't ever find a spot that was close to the NCRC, and so they were just very worried about traipsing through, especially come wintertime, all the way through the parking lot. And so the crosswalk and the parking spots will definitely help with that. And then from last year, and then in light of last week's events, we'll also make sure to continue to practice all safety drills during out-of-school time, just ensuring that staff and kids know what course of action to follow, and also what is expected of them during these situations. Other tasks that we hope to accomplish this year is exploring the possibility of an electronic sign outside of the NCRC, as well as increased signage both inside and outside of Community Services. And so increased signage will basically just help clarify locations of programs, and it will prevent people from wandering aimlessly around the building, thus creating a safer atmosphere, and just generally helping people out, creating better customer service. We also hope to explore the possibility of signage indicating Hand in Hand and Early Ventures' parent-aware status, and then as well as investigating the possibility of keeping our beloved second fingerprint reader over at Longfellow, just off of the playgrounds, because families love it.
And then our last objective for this coming year is around the space and programming needs for Community Services. So first, looking to explore, modify, and expand programming spaces for our early childhood learners. And we are looking at adding a Hand in Hand classroom at Longfellow. If you looked at our tasks for this year, we were hoping to add 15 students into Hand in Hand Preschool through scholarships this year. We are currently sitting at 23 new students this year on Pathway 2 scholarships, thus the need to add another classroom, which we have done already for this year. And so we also, in adding that classroom, added another section of preschool at Longfellow, so it has now completely filled that end of Longfellow with our Hand in Hand Preschool. In addition to that, looking to add an Early Ventures preschool room. So as we mentioned, with those Pathway scholarships, they can also serve and cover childcare. And so both with scholarship dollars and with fee-based students, we see more and more need for wraparound childcare, and are also limited in the space that we have at Longfellow to provide that. So we are in the process, if you are on DPAC, or you've been in Longfellow and are familiar with Room 102, are in the process of changing that into another Early Ventures preschool room. I should say that neither adding a Hand in Hand Preschool room or an Early Ventures room, while it may sound like a small task, is really not a small task. In addition to just the general things you think of, whether it's adding the supplies and the technology and the staff, because Early Ventures is a Department of Human Services licensed childcare center, they need to come back out, revisit, make sure we are needing a book about this, pick up qualifications, which we are in all the other rooms, but just, we, there are some extra hurdles that need to go into that. And before we can open that room, they and the fire marshal do need to be out to visit. So we are in the process of adding those steps as well. Other early childhood spaces that we're taking a look at, we are moving and have moved ECFE Family School Programming to Emmaus Church for this year. This is kind of twofold. We received a lot of feedback from participants who are primarily coming from the Greenville area, that, and we did provide transportation, that they would still appreciate it being closer to home. And so it's kind of twofold worked, it allowed us to be able to move the program closer to home, it also is reducing our transportation bill slightly. We are still providing transportation to that site for those that need it, but also helped in what was our transportation bill. And Emmaus Church has been very, very gracious in offering their space and helping with that program. And then lastly, with the changing of Room 102 at Longfellow into an Early Ventures room, it did result in the need to move where early childhood screening is located at. So we are in the process, that has been moved over to the NCRC, but just causes some of the space needs that need to then happen there to accommodate that moving. We also then want to continue to explore space options for after-school elementary and middle school programming. These are also areas we continue to grow. The KidVentures program, on the last day of school last year, there were 328 total kids enrolled in KidVentures, and as of last Friday, there's 344 kids enrolled in KidVentures this year, which is great. And so it just, it allows us to continue to look at where we hold those program in, and making sure we have enough space. The same thing is happening with the Middle School Youth Center, another great problem. When programs continue to grow, you just need to continue to revisit how that works for the space that you're located in. Then continuing on our space and programming needs, I'm hoping the graphic on the left looks very familiar, since you saw this last week, but continuing to expand programming at the Greenville Park Community School, and of course, the annual report you saw at the last board meeting reflects the numbers that we had last year at that program. But continuing to expand our early childhood offerings, again, kind of in partnership with the work we're doing in connecting folks to the community and being ready for kindergarten in those early childhood ages. And then also develop two new offerings with community partners. One of the huge successes of the community school is that we have the outreach and connection with community partners, and the services they provide, continuing to grow those. We'd also like to continue to increase awareness of the Community Services Program, again, by adding students, which I just mentioned, to Hand in Hand Preschool through scholarships, which we are on the way. We also want to review our sliding fee scale in ECFE. One of the great, the sliding fee scale allows families to choose based on their household income, what rates they would pay for certain programming, and probably for some of the first time, which I think is a great trend, or I think something I hope we'd see, we are seeing people that might have household incomes that are lower than what this sliding fee scale is currently accounting for, which I think is great. That's not necessarily a population that ECFE has served, but would love to be serving. And so continuing to look at that, and how we can make that, accommodate that. And then also increase the use of the Link space at the Northfield Community Resource Center, again, talking about this space that is most closest to our office and Head Start, by providing some literacy spaces and books, furniture for small kids to, again, just encourage. It is a place we're seeing more and more families stop before and after classes at ECFE, and so really wanting to encourage what that space is going to look like. And then lastly, explore additional locations in the Northfield community for programs, again, as we continue to look at the programs we offer, and how they continue to grow, visiting two other community education programs, to see how they use spaces and what spaces they are using for their programs. And then also explore additional spaces and options for programs in the Northfield community. I think especially when we think of recreation programming, the new skate park, the off-road biking trails, provide some great options for new partnerships with programming, and some great new opportunities to look there. There's also, we've had some loose conversations with the city of Northfield about some outdoor spaces for pickleball in the summer, which adult, you know, would be great for adults who like to be outside, and would certainly help expand our programming as well.
All right. Just to end with some fun facts. So for the 14-15 fiscal year, we had 40,827 children, youth and adults participate in a community services program, and this is a 9,000-person increase over last year, partly due to Greenville Parks Community School, and also partly due to MDE's more defined guidelines on who to actually count in these programs, but overall, a pretty significant increase. And then 98,763 people had access to a school district facility through community services, which is nearly a 15,000-person increase over last year. And then just to expand on this, for facility access from the 13-14 fiscal year, we had 49 user groups access district facilities, and then this previous year, we had 64 user groups accessing district facilities. And then for fiscal year 14-15, Community Services provided scholarships to 237 program participants in 31 different program areas. So the total cost to our department for these scholarships was $7,615.55.
Questions?
Thank you. Board members' questions? Margaret?
Couple of them. Under the highlights of progress around collective impact, you say that 32 additional children attended Hand in Hand Preschool by accessing scholarships. Does that mean you added 32, or like completely 32 new children?
That means 32 new, yes. Thirty, that was last year, 32 new children.
Wow.
And this is partly due, Margaret, so last year was our first year with Pathway 2 Scholarship. So that was the first year we had that additional $35,000. So that's what, what we used that for was to help provide more preschool, and so the opportunities for children that qualified for scholarships. And those, so it actually really covers the whole, it covers preschool tuition, transportation, snacks or mouth that is served, it can cover Early Ventures' wraparound childcare for families who chooses, and so it really does cover the whole picture.
That's a lot of kids to add at one time. Were you ready for that extended number?
So we were, I will say, more prepared this year, partly was just due to when we found out about the grant last year. So we were notified that we received Pathway 2 scholarships on September 1 last year, which makes it a pretty quick turnaround. And so partly last year, those 32, some were added throughout the school year, where this year, we are much more on top of that, because we were notified much earlier. We also, this year, are receiving $52,500, so they expanded the amount of dollars that we are receiving on Pathway 2 this year, which is what is making us able to serve more students this year. But this is again why we have added that Hand in Hand Preschool class.
You're to be commended for being able to program that quickly for that many children, because that's significant. And then in the bigger picture...
We're trying, we're trying to catch up a little by trying to add these rooms, but it is, we're planning for where that, we see that happening too.
And then in the bigger sense, if the community were to choose to say, build a new Greenville school, and turn the old Greenville school into an early childhood area, how do you see that impacting a lot of this programming or your goals?
Sure. So part of where we're at right now with the programs that we provide at Longfellow, so the Hand in Hand and Early Ventures, we will now have accessed, other than a closet, probably every space.
Right.
We can legitimately provide preschool programming or Early Ventures childcare programming. And so at some level, after this year, we look at being a little bit limited on space, and so how we then start to add additional children becomes, could become a concern, or where, how we add sections, or, you know, do we need to get very creative about timing of sessions and things like that? And so to, one, obviously, that would have some additional space for more rooms to be added. It also would put all of Community Services programming in one location. So for example, Breezy, Sarah Line, who is our Early Child Coordinator, split time between offices at the NCRC and offices that are at Longfellow in order to cover the programming that they oversee, being, Sarah being Early Childhood Family Education, and Hand in Hand, and Breezy being the KidVentures program, and then Early Ventures. And so that would also allow those to be together. It would also, I think, allow some opportunities with our adult basic education, which is currently, it's located primarily at the NCRC, although we do have some programming that's part of the community school as well, but opportunities for families with children to be able to come in and have full services at one location.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Rob?
Two questions that are unrelated to each other. The first one is, most of the, what you're focusing on with the Northfield Promise is on early childhood and getting ready for kindergarten, but it seems like with all of the recreation and all the other programs you do, that there are other benchmarks that you are related to. And so do you help in gathering data for that, and what's your interaction with those other benchmarks?
Absolutely. So, Rob, part of it is just where the Northfield Promise is in itself, in rolling out benchmarks. The first benchmark that was rolled out was Ready for Kindergarten, thus we're farther along in that benchmark than we, and then the second one that was rolled out is the Reading Team Benchmark. So we're further along in those. We are now in the process of rolling out some of those middle school and high school benchmarks that weren't at the start. And so we have, we have staff that are on the action teams of caring and connected adults, and so we have two staff that are on those action teams. And so that, I think, as we continue to have this goal, you'll continue to see those expanded. Just in the overall Northfield Promise and where benchmarks are rolled out, those aren't as far along, they don't have a roadmap. So in our goals, this is where we talk about placing additional staff on those action teams, and then continuing to be able to facilitate that work as that work gets developed.
And then the second question is about the NCRC, because when I go there, I'm coming down, I'm walking down the sidewalk, down Jefferson, and I see the Northfield Senior Center, and I think, how do I get to HCI or whatever? So, and there's no sidewalk that goes on that side of Raider Drive or whatever it is, to get to the backside, so I'm just wondering if there are ways to make, unless you're driving in a car to the parking lot and back, it's really hard to get to. So I'm wondering about, you know, improving the access to the backside of the building.
Sure. We haven't had much conversation about sidewalks for our side of the building, which you're right, on neither side, is there, there is a sidewalk that would run kind of along the backside of our parking lot, so basically from kitty corner from the high school parking lot, it runs along the other side of our building, so not the Raider Drive side, but the, I can't think what road that is, but the opposite road from Raider Drive.
Constitution or something.
Presidential, something like that.
Yeah, one of those. So there is a sidewalk that runs along there, but you're correct, that there isn't one that runs along Raider Drive. So part of what we've talked about with those signage that Breezy mentioned, was having, whether it's an electric sign out front, which this, this has been a building-wide conversation about needing more direction, and so whether there's something of that that could help guide people down Raider Drive, whether we have another sign, you know, either at the corner there or on Raider Drive, that tells you, yes, you should turn into this parking lot for Community Services, Head Start, the CAC, that is all what we're hoping to kind of clear up this year, because you're right, it is a challenging building. There's great organizations in that building, and it might be fun for some people to tour, but not everybody wants to tour. They're trying to find where they're going, and so we're certainly, and I think especially in light of having things like, you know, early childhood screening and some other things in the building, where we want to be clear for families where they're going and how they'll get there, so that is what we'll certainly look at, trying to better clear up for people as they come into.
Great. Other questions?
I actually have two questions, not related either. So I think it was brilliant that you tapped into the Ready, Set, Go Day to get some information. How was the survey done? Did you approach them coming in, or how did you actually catch people to do the survey?
Sure. So last year, when we did this, it was on, we did it, we've done this survey twice now. Last year, it was done on paper surveys, so we handed, it was in the folder that families got, you know, with a lot of other paperwork for that day. And this year, we did it with the iPad, and we had fam, we had the teacher administer the survey. Because what we did find last year, there was maybe some confusion about what their child had attended, or there wasn't necessarily accurate reporting, meaning that we knew some families that had attended Hand in Hand Preschool, for example, but did not indicate that on the survey that they took, and so thought we could, and partly it might be you didn't know that was what it was called, or you didn't have a clear understanding of what that question meant. And so this year, by administering it on iPads and having the teacher verbally read that, if there were questions, that could be explained too. So that was how it happened.
Excellent. And then my second question, Pathway 2 scholarships. Have you distributed all of them, and if so, does that start some sort of a waiting list, or how does that work?
We have a few dollars, between Pathways and some of our school readiness levy, we still have a few spots left.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly, part of the benefit of knowing our allocation for Pathways dollars much earlier this year is that we have been much more successful in getting students into preschool early, which everybody wants. I mean, that's beneficial for all involved. And so we, we will certainly continue to take any students that we can, until we don't have room, but we still have room right now. And we again have notified community organizations that we have these available, and they do have the applications. and they do have the applications to help facilitate that as well.
And then lastly, I just want to commend Breezy for your work with Kid Ventures. I think that is really excellent that you're making some really great, excuse me, improvements there. And then your work with the NCRC for security. I think when we hear security, you think, you know, having to amass a lot of money to implement, you know, door locks and all these different things, and what you did was no cost. I mean, you really just put your heads together and figured out, how can we make it more secure by, you know, just doing a few little things, but have made huge improvements and a huge difference. So thank you for your work on that.
Thanks.
Excellent report as always.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will move on to, there are no items for individual action this evening, so we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file that were added to the, excuse me, added to the consent grouping. So is, as you review, is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Goan, seconded, seconded by Ellen. All those, or any discussion, questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to items for information, and we have Dr. Hillman here to present a master facilities planning update. And also as a reminder, there was some information in the table file regarding his presentation.
It is always humbling to follow Erin. You know, when we first moved to Northfield seven years ago, Mary and I would have routinely what we called not in Kansas anymore moments, that we were so awestruck by the wonderfulness of the programming in our town, and frankly, seven years later, I still have them relatively regularly. I think we forget sometimes, the joke is it's a special place, but it's, it really is a special place. And thanks to Erin and Daryl before her for some great reports. So the last couple of board meetings have been relatively short, so we're paying for them tonight.
You are paying for it now.
I will be brief on this, to the best of my ability, but obviously, it's a very important topic, and so we need to go through and just give you an update as to where we're at. So basically, just want to remind you what we've been doing, we're talking about a master facilities plan, you know, this started with the implementation of all-day kindergarten. We've done demographic and site studies, we had eighteen stakeholder meetings in October of 2014. In the spring of 2015, this body had discussions about our next steps, and that prompted us to have an additional set of stakeholder feedback meetings this past fall, and that's what I'm going to, or this current fall, it seems like the past fall already with people talking about snow later this week, but that's my goal here tonight is to share a few things with you about our seven stakeholder feedback meetings from this fall. So we did, we focused really at these seven meetings on the master facilities plan, history and process, and essentially, we presented, we have two different approaches, which I'm just going to review with you here briefly tonight so that everyone in the room is on the same page. And we also shared some of the tax impact, again, being as transparent as we can, very early in the process about, we're not blind to the fact that any of the things that we talk about are most likely going to cost the taxpayers money, and unlike other public entities will most likely, well, they, not most likely, they have to require some kind of bond referendum, which requires approval of the voters. This is a photo from our largest meeting that we had, and it was ten people who didn't, who are people who are community people and not school board or school employee folks, but that was a great meeting that we held over at Greenville Park. So after we gave that little presentation and so on and so forth, we did do a small group activity, and what we did is we broke people into small groups, and we gave them this document right here, which was basically a tool that we provided to them in order to facilitate their discussion, asking them what were their thoughts about the independent approach and the interdependent approach, which I'll share in just a moment, and again, asking them what did they like about the approach, what didn't they like about the approach, and did they have something else that they would like us to consider as part of it. Then as people left, they got this little exit ticket. Now, to be fair, this is our final version, Chris and I, I think this was version number three, but we had worked through different pieces of this concept of trying to gather some data when people left the meeting, we thought was really important. So let's just review the approaches very briefly. Under the independent action approach, which again is something that would address facilities issues at each independent facility, based upon the feedback from 2014 meetings, at Bridgewater Elementary, we would do a small main office addition to create a secure entrance. We would basically then recapture the current main office for special needs classrooms, so that could be title, it could be special education, it could be EL. At Sibley Elementary, we'd be looking at a small music addition, again, for equality of facilities across the three elementary, so that each facility had two music spaces, and also expanding the core center of the facility that was originally built for three-hundred-and-fifty students, now at five-hundred-and-seventy-four students. Basically where the cafeteria and media center is right there, we'd expand that to be entirely a cafeteria and a kitchen, do a small media center addition just adjacent to the most recent 2009 construction at that facility. At Greenville Park, the most aggressive at the elementary, basically we'd be doing a controlled entry, there doesn't need to be an addition there because we believe that we can do that inside the current doors near the entrance to the cafeteria. There would be a small classroom addition on the side of the building toward the Greenville Community Garden. We would basically take and create classrooms from floor to ceiling. Now, what those ceilings would look like would still be up for debate, but the fact would be that that would basically enclose classrooms, eliminating the final remnants of the old open school that the building was originally constructed at. Once we do that, we need to create some skylights to bring natural light into the center of the facility, and also mechanical upgrades would be very important. The original mechanical system designed to work with an open building would need to be re, would need to redo it so that we would be able to handle those kinds of enclosed classrooms. At the middle school, you're going to find, this was quite a popular option, this is the only thing we got applause about at any of the meetings. And that would be to expand the driveway at the middle school. And again, we'd essentially just widen it so that there could be two lanes of traffic, and then one lane where people could pull off and park and wait for their children to come from various events. At Northfield High School, under the independent approach, we'd be have a relatively aggressive campaign in terms of doing an orchestra addition, a small auxiliary gym addition, doing a main office addition right outside of door number one, again, creating that secure entry where we have to come through the office in order to get to the building after the school day has started. We would basically then have a domino effect where the district offices would move from their current location to the current high school offices, then the programming from the Rock House would move to the current district office space. Remember, the Rock House programming is for students in special education who are transitioning and need life skills instruction, we'd replicate it with a small apartment kind of piece, which many schools do in the current district office space. We actually believe that would also allow for some additional special education classrooms in the current district office. We would do some locker room work because we're told that the locker rooms are not the pride of any conference in the state of Minnesota, apparently. We'd also need to do a small elevator addition.
Nineteen sixty-three.
There would also be just in terms of to make things more ADA compliant and allowing students with, who are in a wheelchair, who have other movement issues, to be able to get to that second floor without having to traipse all the way across the upstairs gym. We also believe that we'd be looking at the discussion about, is it time to turf Memorial Field? Finally, at Longfellow, we'd be doing a little bit of adding some parking, improving the bus drop-off and outdated play structure, and doing some work with the restrooms to bring those up to ADA compliance. You'll notice there's some dollars here, remember that those are our architectural firms indexed concept estimates, so they're not, they're saying that we think this is what it's going to cost, especially if you build in a couple of years of potential interest and so, not interest, but inflation in terms of the economy moving forward. When we move to the interdependent approach, the approaches at Sibley, at Bridgewater, at the middle school, all remain the exact same. As you know, the main difference between the independent, interdependent approach is that one key component would be the possible construction of a new Greenville Park Elementary School on the current Greenville Park site, across the parking lot from more of the current facility stands. Margaret referenced this in a question that she had to Erin. Basically, we would then try to reclaim the current Greenville Park site with some minimal upgrades and some middle, minimal modifications, and reclaim that as an early childhood and community education center. The new Greenville Park facility, we're estimating, believing would be about a six-hundred student facility, theoretical capacity, and we know theoretical capacity versus real capacity. It'd be a multi-story facility, about the same square footage as Bridgewater, but again, multiple stories as opposed to a single story. Key piece then would also be that we would, that would free up pieces at the NCRC and Longfellow. We would no longer lease our portion of the NCR facility, should we have that new Greenville Park constructed and the current Greenville Park being recaptured for community education and early childhood programming. We would then relocate our district offices to Longfellow. Longfellow, again, is a very good building for lots of things, but it has outlived its usefulness as a school for small children in the long term. We think it's a great use of our space and an example of our stewardship to make sure that we have some kind of district offices on that main floor and that lower floor. We would keep the ALC exactly where it is because they just love their space and are adamant that that's where they want to be, and we agree with them. We want them to be right where they are and they're very comfortable. That brings us to Northfield High School. And the concept under the interdependent approach at Northfield High School would be to consider asking the voters to build a brand-new fifteen-hundred-student high school. Again, it would be about, it'd be laid out along Division and Jefferson on the same plot of land that we're currently sitting on now. Basically, it would be a multi-story facility, we've taken the Andover High School drawing and placed it conceptually on the plot of land, and our architectural partners, ATS and R, believe that it meets all their criteria and allows us a lot of room. We would then need to demolish this particular existing location to the tune of about four million dollars. You know that we've had several discussions about, would it be possible for us to reclaim any of this facility and maintain some of it? And as we know, people ask us, well, how about that brand-new lower cafeteria that was built in nineteen ninety-four? That's how long it's been and people just remember that. And it's not, it's just the way it is. It's people have, what's the latest thing that we put on? And that's the newest thing, so it's always going to be the new cafeteria until something else is constructed. However, when we look at the number, seventy-two and a half million dollars is the projected cost of a fifteen-hundred-student modern high school. And that squares with some of the other projects that we've seen of similar square footage recently, Alexandria being one of them. We would look at turfing Memorial Field, possibly engaging in that discussion and to be very clear, because this is, Memorial Field would stay exactly where it is, it would not move at all, just right where it is, that we've had a number of questions about that. We look at the, as I mentioned, we'd move to the, possibly move the district office to Longfellow, we'd still need to do some adding of parking and do some, obviously some office and some other ADA alterations to bring that up to speed for what would be an office culture in that area moving forward. So I just briefly, you guys have heard this all, but I just want to make sure everybody who's here has a clear understanding of what we're looking at. Are there any questions at all of anything that I've said, or I don't believe I changed my story on anything? This is the fourteenth time or something I've, yes?
I think.
Yes, Ellen?
Okay. So you met with the seven community meetings, were there meetings with the staff?
We're working through those right now. So we have currently met with the ALC, the high school, the middle school, and Sibley. We have Bridgewater scheduled, they were originally scheduled for this Wednesday, they've asked that we push them back one week due to the joint PLCs that are happening this Wednesday morning, awesome stuff too, by the way. And then we are working with Greenville Park. It looks like I'm going to be at their site council meeting in November, which is just not until later in November. So we are working through all of the different sites and doing the similar piece to what we did the last time.
I think the only other piece, Matt, is that with both Greenville Park and with the high school, the strategy is to maintain the current buildings as is until the new facility is completed and constructed. So you do not have any of the issues of having to try to move out of the building before it's done. And we believe that because of the much more reduced level of work that would need to be done at Greenville Park to create a early childhood and community ed center, we could do that remodeling over the summer, and we could do the demo of the high school building over the summer and be prepared for the fall. So again, the concept is not having to deal with what a lot of school districts do when they're in that heavy-duty building process of saying, you know, how are we going to try to structure this so that we can actually get work done and get it done by the time school starts the next year? Because obviously, in both the case of Greenville Park and the high school, these are multiple-year construction projects.
Yeah, and to be really clear, you know, I have often said, when people ask me, where are we at in this process? I really kind of look at this as about a four-step process with us being at, toward the end of phase two right now. We started with a blank slate, we came back with something a little bit more robust, but we don't have an approach yet. We have a couple of different approaches, and if you really look at it, there are approaches within approaches that you could choose to ask us to pursue. When we talk about these things, they are conceptual. There have been no drawings of any facilities, anything that's been done has been sketch and very conceptual work because, again, we have been really serious about trying to engage people. We want to get their feedback early in this process, rather to when we select a direction and then have people say, well, I'd really like to get involved and help more with this at this point, which we will certainly welcome them, but what we know is we have the best chance to get a very, a very clear approach now. And we have the advantage that we are not in crisis with our facilities. We can take our time and do what's right, and that's our core value of stewardship at work. I do want to show you that, again, what we did look at is we also shared with people at these meetings this tax impact table, being very clear, I think that I've underlined and very and preliminary and potential, really hammering home the fact that this is very preliminary. And what we asked elders to do is take the high end of both of the, of the approaches, the high end of the independent approach and the high end of the interdependent approach, if all of those projects were done, and just giving people a sense of what would the tax impact be. And we've had some feedback from a couple of people who are very pleased that we have done this, this really specifically talking about the commercial industrial. There are some folks who said that often has been left out, you know, over the years with various things. I think that's also, sometimes people forget that when we talk about our operating levy, you know, those things are slightly different. But as we know, in a bond referendum, any of these pieces would also tax ag land, where in an operating levy, we don't, remember, in an operating levy, it's the house, the garage and one acre of land. So a bond election is different, and we can never start educating people early enough on that because it is a different animal. But again, what we just wanted to share with people is, very conceptually, that here are the potential tax impacts, and it's just that we actually know that this will cost us more money, and it will cost you money, and we want to be as transparent about that as possible, knowing that these figures will not be the same ones as whatever we move forward with. So I just want to share with you a little bit of the results of the exit ticket analysis. And I'm going to skip ahead to this to begin with because I think it's important to frame this. So I want to be clear, we've been saying that we had twenty-nine people attend these meetings, and I have to admit right here that I was wrong. We had thirty-three people attend. Part of that is because I went back to the rosters and noticed that there were three or four people who I knew were at some of these meetings, who I talked with, that weren't on, they didn't sign in. So that's a flaw in our system that we'll try to create the next time to have someone chasing people down and make sure that they sign in. But when we went through those individual exit tickets, it showed that thirty-three people consistently voted as they left on the different projects. So this is a very low number of attendees. You think about the fact that we just simply have four thousand students within the school district, we had thirty-three people who did not need to be at these meetings. Now, Jim, Col, Seth, Chris and myself were at every single meeting, every one of you was at a meeting at some point, some of you at multiple meetings. So we're not counting you as part of that process, okay? We also had some people who came twice. We had a couple of people who came to two meetings because they wanted to come back and re-engage, which was really good. But I just want to make sure that we're very clear that this makes it difficult to have great confidence in these responses, but these people took time out of their evening to come and visit with us, so I think it's important we share with you what they said to us. As I said before, thirty-three of thirty-three on the middle school driveway, it's the only project that probably we can do without voter approval. Let's go back here. So I just want to basically show, this replicates the way that we did the exit ticket. And so we offered three options. I could support the project, I could live with the project, or I could not support the project. We also had some people who just didn't answer an individual question, so I've captured that here. What we see is there's, what I would say of the, of the thirty-three people who attended, there was very strong support at Bridgewater and for the Sibley projects, at near eighty percent and near ninety percent with support. If you add in the live with, you see that that goes up a little bit further. The live withs, I'm a little less confident with because, okay, all right, I can agree with that, but with further details, there could be some complications there. When we look at the independent approach at Greenville Park, now remember, that's the renovation of that facility, the floor-to-ceiling classroom kinds of pieces, we had just under forty percent of people who were in complete support of it, fifty-one percent, fifty-one and a half percent could live with it. When we compare and contrast that to the interdependent approach, the possible construction of a new Greenville Park Elementary and the corresponding reclamation of the current Greenville Park as an early childhood center, we see the number just under seventy percent with about twelve percent of people saying they could live with it. When we take a look at the high school, When we take a look at the high school, again, the independent approach, which is, again, those additions, which I failed to mention, remember, all of those additions that we talked about at the high school, roughly 16, or roughly $14 million worth of improvements without touching one academic classroom. So, 33% of people said that they would support the independent approach, which were those additions. 42% said that they could live with it. And this is the one that most people did not care for, in terms of 18% saying they could not support that. At the high school interdependent piece, about 72% or nearly 73% said they could support that. 15.15% said they could live with it. And just over 12% indicated that they could not support that. So, what do we learn out of that? We learned that people love the middle school driveway, all right? It's a gift that keeps on giving here. Again, I think that what we're, the other peo- Longfellow, I don't think we were able to frankly clarify or help people understand the question enough. Because Longfellow was some funky data because I don't think that people really understood how Longfellow fit into both of the mixes because it's not a building that a lot of people have experience with. So, I just think that that's a piece of, anything we would move forward with, we would have to do a much better and more detailed explanation of the Longfellow project. But again, we see that strong support for those Bridgewater and Sibley. I, I thought about sharing with you some of the comments from the backside of these sheets, but there just weren't enough of them that were representative for me to real- but some of them, you know, one that sticks out, someone right on for Bridgewater, so like, just do them, you know, just, just get on with it and move on. That was only one piece out of 33, let me be clear. I just found it was interesting that the interdependent approach at both Greenville and the high school were things that were supported. And I'll be frank, that I was surprised a little bit that the Greenville Park number was lower than what I thought it would be. Because the buzz that we heard as we moved through tables, people saying, oh, that sounds like a great reuse of the old building, makes all sorts of sense. And I'll be frank, that I, the high school number was higher than what I would thought it would be because there was a lot of debate and discussion at tables about a new high school in terms of just, and I think really, it has to do with the number of, you know, what a new high school would cost in terms of what I was hearing from people. So, but that shows that the small group process worked because people came out of it and they maybe changed their thoughts or when they were willing to put something by themselves, they indicated that they could support it. Again, we're basing this all on 33 people, but they took time out of their evening to come. So, that's the results in terms of that. What are our next steps? We mentioned the last board meeting about thought exchange. We are having our introductory meeting on Friday afternoon at 3:00 with them. Our goal, it's pretty aggressive, but our goal right now is to complete that first weather report or that general survey by Thanksgiving. That's our goal. We'll see if, if they're going to let us do that or not. Chris and I can be pretty persuasive.
Yes, we can.
Then, our, our idea would be, most of the time, what thought exchange will say is that, well, let's see what comes out of the first weather. We've just said, no, we need to do a master facilities planning engagement piece in the spring. As we move forward with thought exchange, we will use that November weather report to help inform the kinds of questions we might ask in the spring. And then, our hope would be that in the spring of 2015, or 2016, I'm sorry, I apologize, it should be 2016, really that we would finalize a master facilities plan. We'd ask you to finalize a master facilities plan for us in terms of the, giving us the direction that we believe we should go based upon what will be more than about 18 months or more worth of work. So, we haven't, this hasn't been a hair-trigger kind of thing. This has been very deliberate and very thoughtful, in my opinion. And then, based upon whatever action we take with that master facilities plan in terms of, are there projects that you'd like us to go after right away? Are there some that are scheduled to be reevaluated later on? We would prepare whatever necessary actions would, would need to be done to enact that plan. And again, you know, people will ask me, what do you think's going to happen? I say, well, it could range all the way from nothing, you know, to the board asking us to go after everything in the first, you know, kind of approach. My sense is with most things, well, maybe we'll land somewhere in between. But that's kind of the range that I see when I, when people talk to me, what, what are the possibilities? When you look at the extremes, those are really the extremes. And maybe we'll land somewhere in the middle, but we certainly have been asking for a lot of feedback. Be straightforward that we're just disappointed with the number of people who we've been able to engage in. I don't think, if, if people have other ideas for how we can try to market some of these things, we sent multiple skylights. We were intentional with our language, talking about bond referendum. Brittany in the Northfield News did a couple of very nice stories for us. Jeff Johnson had us on the radio several times. Like I've told you, the only thing we didn't do is send something out in the water bill. And, you know, I'm not sure.
And it was all the words and all the frame that you typically don't do anywhere near this time in this kind of effort. So, to talk to people about this is the potential of a bond issue, sharing with people preliminary tax numbers. Typically, none of that normally happens until you get to the point where you've settled on one approach and you're ready to, to move forward with it. So, I think we really tried to engage the community. Now, what we are finding, however, across the state and in districts right now that are going for bond issues this fall, the response back in most communities has been incredibly small. Owatonna is, is looking at a $72 million bond issue. They had nine people show up for their meeting where they were saying not, oh, you know, tell us what might be a possible plan, what might be the cost, but saying, here's exactly what we're going to do, here's the exact cost we're going to be, and this is, is what your tax impact is going to be. So, again, I think that's the reason that Matt and I looked really seriously at thought exchange as a way to really try to expand that community engagement in a, in a different way. And our, our hope is that that will actually give us, you know, significant additional information before we move and, and go forward with this process. But this is kind of unique. Now, I know there's some other districts that are having more responses by community and in some cases, organized vote no campaigns. And, and so, we know that's also happening around the state in various bond issues that are coming up for the votes in November. I think it's going to be important for us to take a look at and watch what happens during those elections too, because that may help us to get some sense of what kind of the feelings are around the state as far as the appetite that people have for potential bond issues.
You know, I, I just want to clarify something I said. While we were disappointed in the number of people who attended, we were not disappointed in the level of conversation, the level of dialogue. The people who did come were very thoughtful, asked incredible questions. And you know, if you think about it, we had meetings with two or three, and frankly, sometimes with some of our smaller groups, we actually had meetings that lasted the longest because people were really engaged, well, what about this? Or have we thought about this? Or tell us the backstory on this. And so, we had very rich discussions, you know, with the people who came. We were hoping to get a little bit more consensus, you know, with this, which is, so the disappointment is in the number of people, not in the level of dialogue. And I just want to be really clear about that. I, you know, I'm a sucker for a great public meeting and not, all of these really met my expectations in terms of the level of dialogue. So, good stuff.
I like, a lot of that too has been disseminated from people who attend out, you know, or people are asking friends and they're asking me and so on, what is happening? So, it isn't that people aren't hearing at all. They just may not have been at that meeting, but they're hearing definitely, so.
Thank you. Because I think you're right. I mean, in this day and age, you know, the webbing of information can get out pretty quickly. So, my hope is, and again, we'll be updating with some of this information, we'll be updating the master facilities planning page later this week to kind of capture the end of this part of the process. And if you go back and look there, it's really fascinating because you go all the way back to the beginning with Hazel's report. And our goal is that when we get to the end of this and we have something that does go before the voters, we'll be able to point to people and say, you know, listen, we've really been looking at this for quite a while, very deliberately, very intently. You know, we take the core value of stewardship extremely seriously. And what our goal is, is to make sure that we are intentional about developing the kinds of facilities that best serve students and our taxpayers for the long-term foreseeable future.